Okay, 6:00 PM right on the dot. Let's call the meeting to order. Looks like we have everybody in attendance. I'll ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I make motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Brenda, second by grade. Any discussion on the agenda? There are no discussion. All those in favor approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same. Agenda carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Anybody like to address the board?
Just listening.
Okay. Okay, we will move on. We have some acknowledgements. We have Mr. Fitzsimmons and the Band Trip Chaperones. Anything you'd like to add there, Brian?
Yeah, a good trip, a lot of work. And we wanted to thank Mr. Fitzsimmons and the Band Trip Chaperones for all their work providing guidance and support and supervision. A lot of kids, a great experience, and a very busy trip. So that's work, but it's fun.
Is that accurate, Brenda?
Yeah. Actually, I'd just like to add, amazing. I mean, we left here at 12:15 and Mr. Cork was here to help see us off in the morning and we got to the cities and our, what do you call her? Tour guide was there and she had everything set up there. So it was so smooth, we took four in the morning with everybody who hasn't slept, it was great. We had a couple of kids that got sick along the way and they were just super about it and Tara stayed back twice and was just amazing. I had one eye roll the whole time and that was after we'd been delayed in New York and in Chicago coming home. That was the only thing I had the whole time. Like, she just looked at me and kind of like rolled her eyes and did what she was supposed to do and moved on. But kids were great, great group of kids. I can't say it enough.
Good. Like a good trip. Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Nelson, do you have the elementary principal eight years?
Yep. Rowment, we're at 4:38. The next two weeks are big weeks at elementary. State testing and reading this week and math will be next week for the MCA's here. Our instructional leadership team has been looking at math this year and will be deciding what our focus will be next year. It'll be, we'll be working on math through probably next fall with the test results to see where any gaps or holes are in our current teaching and look to what we need to do for more materials or what we need to hit in different areas as well. So thank you to everyone on that team. They've done a great job. April 27th is Administrative Professional Day. Want to thank Sherry and Gwen and when Sherry Linus comes over for everything that they do at the elementary for all of our students, teachers, pairs and parents as they come to the front office there, very welcoming and help out whatever they can. May 2nd through the 6th is Teacher Appreciation Week. And again, want to thank all our teachers for everything that they do. Last couple of years have not been easy, we all know that, but they go above and beyond for our students every day. And then May 6th is National Watch Hero Day and special thanks to our cooks for everything they do and especially the difficulties they've had here getting materials hasn't been easy for them because they'll have something planned but they all of a sudden can't get it so they have to adjust on the fly. So thank them for what they're doing. Field trips, all the grades are planning a field trips here this spring and sixth graders will be going to the cities. That'll be an overnight trip so we'll see the Capitol and Science Museum and so it'll be a fun trip for them. They haven't been able to do that for a couple of years. Talking with some of our second grade teachers and those students have never been on a field trip because they were in kindergarten when pandemic hit and last year we didn't go on any field trips. So it'll be a new experience for some of our students here going on field trips this spring. Just a reminder that nominations for the Hall of Fame, we're taking those. So if you know anyone that is worthy of being nominated, please get those to the committee. We'll be meeting here in May for our selection and lots of postponements for the spring. You know, we've had springs like this and we just go with the flow and kids will be busy when we can get outside. Any questions?
Do they have fishing league this year?
Ice fishing league. They're changing it, yep. Instead of, it'll be ice fishing. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Martinez, finance report?
Yeah. Come around so everyone can see me. All right, treasurer's report for the month end of March 31st, 2022. We started the month pretty strong again with $5 million in investments and we just dipped about $80,000 in investments and part of it was I had to draw to make sure we made all of our needs in our checking account. The majority of the stuff, again, cash flow there on funds one through 47. We started cash on hand with $928,000. We have receivables of $1.4 million, accounts payable of $821,000, payroll of $432,000. This month was a little bit high again because we had to pay some activities. For a total cash on hand of $1.1 million cash on hand. Pretty comfortable, pretty comfortable state to be in in this particular, this particular month. Journal entries, again, pretty much just closing any federal grants that we have. A lot of them are coming due. We need to make sure that we draw and then we assign the correct cost allocation towards it. Payables, nothing out of the ordinary. A lot of, a lot of our monthly, monthly utility bills and all the payables that come through. Other things that we have in the agenda, before I move into the other pieces, any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay. Other pieces that we have in the agenda today for the finance department, we have under consent items, letter F, the annual engagement letter with I. Bailey. Cycle starts all over again. This is the initial letter for us to go into contract with them for the upcoming audit of fiscal year '22. We already started preparing for it. We moved the date, the dates of the engagement of when they're on the field a little bit earlier just so we can close the audit a little bit earlier this year. We don't have to wait until November or December to get where we actually end up. Other pieces that we have in the business items, you're going to see there in letter C is we have quite a bit, quite a little bit too to ask up. One of the pieces that we discussed in the finance committee meeting is additional needs and evaluation of our system here. We identified need to open up a full FTE down at the elementary so we asked the board to approve that. Additionally, another priority need that we have up here at the high school is to open up a full-time position for a fax teacher. Another piece that we're asking for is a, open up a full FTE for a high school principal. And then in, in a lot of conversations that we had with the building and grounds department, we decided to consolidate four time, four part-time positions that were custodial staff and we're going to make them into two full-time FTEs. So again, quite a bit of openings. One of the things that we looked at in the finance committee meeting is that with this investment that we're doing is making sure that all of our needs are met at both buildings and district-wide and all of it is within budget and we're still within reason with no hit to our general fund. So all in all, we're starting to invest back gradually and gradually some of those pieces that we cut about three years ago. And we need to make sure that when we do these evaluations that we're going to add staff back or open up positions is that we're going to sustain them for the long term. We don't want to just open one thing up and then a year later cut it. That's not our intention here. When we, when we recommend something is that we know is that we can sustain it for the long term. So with that, do you guys have any questions regarding the treasurer's report or any of the pieces in, that I talked about in the agenda today? Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, Cork?
Okay, high school enrollment. We're at 411 students at this time. We started off the school year with 420 students. MCA testing, we're very busy with MCA testing this coming week. We have math for grades seven, eighth and eleventh and then last week of April will be eighth grade and 10th grade science. So been busy. We completed the reading and now we have the math and science left. May 9th will be the AP Calc tests for the AP students that are taking AP Calc for this class. PLC is in Top 20 update. It's going to be our last PLC here this, this Wednesday for the school year. Just a reminder that we've been doing a book study with Top 20 and Will Sweeney has been with us, working with our staff for professional development. Been a good experience. It's been good for our staff, so been very positive. Class registration for next year, grades, students in grades seven through 11 are registering for classes for next year. Mrs. Seebles is going to classes, so we're starting to plan for next school year. Community education, summer rec. Mr. Rung was hired to run summer rec. He is in the planning stages of putting everything together from staffing to the activities that we're offering and then the times. So he's been busy doing that and working with Ms. Everson and myself and getting people lined up. So we're excited for summer, June, July. COVID dashboard update, it's been very good. Been a small number of positive cases, so we've been very thankful there. So that's been good. Fall workshop planning, we are starting to prepare. The admin team's been talking about next work, fall workshop and looking at our goals and our focus for next school year, so we're in the planning stages there. High school openings, we had a high school science opening for grades, science seven and 10 and we have a recommendation for you to hire Bo Kirkwood and that's, our interview committee is recommending the hire of Mr. Kirkwood. Great experience, he'll be a great asset to our staff and we'd be excited to have a part of our team. Also tonight, Mr. Martinez touched base a little bit on the openings of, that we would like to recommend. Our finance committee met last Monday. We had a two-hour meeting, great discussion on our facilities and staffing for the future and those are our recommendations from an elementary teacher, fax teacher, high school principal and then the reorganization from our, for part-time custodians turn them into to full-time. So. Education identity and access management resolution, board resolution tonight, that's a yearly approval and that is, what you're doing is giving me authority to oversee that and authorize, review, recertify user access. So there's multiple people that have access to that and I am the one that gives them the access to have that responsibility. School board student representatives. So we talked earlier this school year about having student representatives. What we did is we had application process where students came in, had the opportunity to apply. We had two students apply, one sophomore, one junior and Ellie Welch is a sophomore. She'd like to be a student representative on the board and in 11th grade Sylvia Pesh. So we met, we talked about being part of the board and being student representatives and what that would look like. They also were informed that they're, they're very busy. If you want to look at their apps after the meeting or right now, you can do that. But they're very busy and what we talked about is to be part of their activities first and so they might could come in late to board meetings if you approve them and they'll see in April, May, June, they'd like to continue on next school year too. So anything you guys would like to say, share? Not yet. All right. Okay. Graduation is May 27th at 7:00 PM. If you could let me know in the next couple of weeks if you're going to be attending or not, then we'll set up stage that week and have enough chairs for everyone that's going to be taking part of graduation. Again, that's May 27th, that'll be at 7:00 PM. I think that's all I have. I think I hit everything that's on the agenda. Any questions for Brian? And as far as our student representatives, will we work on duties or responsibilities? Yeah, I talked to them that they would share some information at board meetings and be part of our high school department. Yes, and low down on what's happening in the building? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. Item seven, consent items. Item A, approve board meeting minutes for March 21st, 2022, regular and March 30th, 2022, special meeting. B, financial claims, March books. C, treasurer's report. D, accept donations to the PRHS Scholarship Fund, $20, memorial for Anna Mae Fawson and, excuse me, from Lisa and Jade Peznick. PRHS Scholarship Fund, $20, memorial for Dick McGregor from Lisa and Jade Peznick. Viking Boutique, $150 from the Pelican Rapids Pool Hall Incorporated. E, item A, personnel approve the hire of Rachel Linus as special education parent professional at Viking Elementary. Approve the hire of Bo Kirkwood as science teacher at PRHS beginning in the '22, '23 school year. Item F would be approved letter of engagement with I. Bailey. And that's it. Is there any motion for the consent items?
I make motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a motion by a and? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the consent items? There are no discussion. All those in favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Consent items carry. On the business items. Item A will be approved, the education identity and access management board resolution. So this is a resolution. We do this every year. And this gives you authority to access.
People are in charge of those different areas, access to it. And then we do it every year.
So I'll just do kind of a summary here. Education identity and access management board resolution. And it's the annual designation of the identified official with authority for education, identity and access management to the state of Minnesota, secure websites. So we need a motion and a second first?
I'll make a motion to approve the education item and access management board resolution.
Motion by a and?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Okay, this is a resolution, so Brittany, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Yes. A and?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Molly?
Yeah.
Resolution carries. Approve the 2021, 22 student school board representatives Sylvia Pesh and Ellie Welch. I'll make a motion, we approve Sylvia Pesh and Ellie Welch.
I'll second.
Second by a and? Any discussion? There are no discussion. All those in favor approving Sylvia Pesh and Ellie Welch signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same. Motion carries, welcome. Item C, approve the following openings. Elementary teacher, 1.0 FTE. Family consumer science or facts, 1.0 FTE. High school principal slash tech integrationist, 1.0 FTE. And two Viking elementary custodians, each as a 1.0 FTE. Correct.
I make a motion to approve the following openings as listed.
Okay, motion by Brenda?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion?
What's the two Viking elementary custodians? I think Brian mentioned it was like a shift of...
So right now, we currently have four part-time custodians at the elementary building. And what we'd like to do is have two full-time, that'll be year-round, instead of having four part-time. So there'll be two full-time and then when it comes to summer, then the full-time, what we've done now is the, part-time would be done, it was like 10, nine months. Okay, so it's during school year and then we'd hire summer help. So with the full-time positions, going to the two full-time, we wouldn't have to hire as many summer helpers to help out. And then we're not, I was looking every year and stressing out about it, here's our staff that we have year-round.
And the high school principal tech slash tech integrationist. I think I need some additional explanation on that unless it was in the materials, but I didn't see it.
Okay, so right now we have full-time technology integrationists district-wide and what we would like to do is look for a high school principal and someone that can help staff integrate technology into their classrooms. So it'd be a role that the person would evolve. However, the focus of the integrationist piece would be more during the workshop time. So in August and before school and workshop days, which next year we have almost one, one a month with workdays, workshop days.
So what would you say the percentage of, oh, the percentage of duties would be allocated between the two positions?
So I think the high school principal would be about 85% of the duties. They would also take on Mr. Christensen's role of curriculum and the new teacher mentor, mentorship program that we have, they'd also help all of that.
How does that affect the Dito students' responsibilities?
So they're going to focus on the teaching, so they'll take the observations of all the staff, they would have all the staffing. Dito students would be in charge of all the discipline, trinity and helping Mr. Nelson with all the activities. So Mr., so you have to remember we have Mr. Christensen's duties right now? So the principal would take that role on and then I've been doing all the observations and handling all the staff, staffing and the principal will take on those duties. So the current salary that we have for the tech integrationist, that salary there would be going towards the principal tech integrationist.
So the tech integrationist position that's already in place right now, that's the equivalent of a, is that what one?
Full-time.
Full-time? How, you know, and I think back to the, I forget when your contract was renewed, Brian, it wasn't that long ago. There was a provision, I recall, where a certain portion of it related to the principal component of your job duties. I don't recall offhand specifically what it identified, but I thought there was some language in the superintendent slash principal contract that related to your role as the principal when it came to observations and the teacher evaluations and things like that. Has that been looked into and reconciled to whatever degree necessary in order to accommodate the approval of a high school principal and tech integrationist without interruption to that pre-existing superintendent contract?
So my superintendent, my contract right now covers all the superintendent duties is what I currently have.
Isn't there a reference to high school principal in that contract?
Is it working? Did it have some?
What did duties?
I think the first time or, yeah. In the second one, it was strictly a superintendent.
So we can look at review over that.
Would that be on our thing here from back when we approved it? Or I thought by chance?
Should be one. What will that be?
I'm looking at the contract right now and when we had the interim superintendent piece, we did have a discussion regarding the allocation of percentages of Mr. Cork's time, at which point we settled on the 80, 20% just we could take the legal stuff from being a principal. On this new contract, we did decide to remove it because we did have extensive conversations when we were in approving the new contract. Larsen asked us to go back to the table prior to approving this particular piece and then in one of our Friday reports, we announced that we were not going to put that specific language in there and the reason for is because it was more of a gentleman's agreement knowing that we had a Dean in place, but he had the responsibility about the legal, legal paperwork that comes as being a principal superintendent. In this new contract, we wanted him to just have a three-year contract as a superintendent with the idea that we were going, we were on the road and in the market to potentially open up a position for a principal.
So if the rest of the board recalls?
I didn't remember talking about and going back to the table.
So what year was that, what year are we into the contract?
Year one of the contract.
So the principal would, the position from a principal perspective in terms of doing what maybe I consider the traditional principal duties, it would provide coverage for the evaluations, teacher evaluations?
And support staff.
Which is what you currently do in your role, correct? And then it would take on additional responsibility that's covered currently by Mr. Christensen?
Yep.
Mentorship program and curriculum. And does anybody know offhand how that's pro-rated between?
Mr. Martinez.
He is a teacher and he is the leader of that mentorship program?
I'm sorry, Mr. Larsen, what was your question again?
Mr. Christensen, currently he's a teacher.
Yes.
So, is there a percentage with regard to how, what, uh, how his obligations are split between his teacher obligations and the other components? You know what that goes on?
Yep, yep. So, we actually, today, what we're doing to supplement that piece is we're actually purchasing his prep hour. So, Mr. Christensen agreed with the district that in return for the services of the curriculum coordinator, we purchase his prep hour. So, essentially whatever his daily rate is, we multiply by the number of duty days and that's what we do. Because it's a full-time, it's a full-time, part-time job you could almost assume. Year-round, he works on that curriculum cycle to make sure that we're meeting all the state standards. In addition, he has created a master plan that takes us, takes us for the next five to ten years on the rotation of every particular department and grade level.
Prior to Mr. Christensen doing that work, what part of that did Pelican Rapids have in place?
Uh, we've had the curriculum cycle in place, then it was dropped, two cuts, and then we wanted to add that piece back in. That's what he picked up. And then he, uh, then we started the mentorship program, built it into more of a detailed, structured uh, program throughout the year. And he helped start that. And he also leads our, I forgot to tell you, I say, put in, he leads our PLCs. Our professional learning communities, so.
I'm not big on comparing our schools to others. I, I think every school's unique and has different needs and if there's an opportunity to allow for additional positions on, on for it. With that said, we, we oftentimes do compare ourselves to the districts. If we look in our general region in Minnesota, has it been any data collected in terms of whether or not similarly sized? School districts have a full-time superintendent, full-time high school principal, full-time elementary principal, and full-time dean of students.
I'd like to say the elementary principal is not a full-time elementary principal. His other duties as well, Nick. Don't forget that.
I'm sorry.
So, is that?
Yeah, gotcha. So, I mean, thanks for the clarification, Derek. So, in terms of where we'd end up if we approve everything as stated on the agenda, would we line up similar to a lot of other school districts that are similarly situated from a size standpoint?
Yes, sir. Uh, so, from the business perspective, we annually collect this data through the help of Lakes Country Service Co-op where we'd like, we'd like to share a lot of information in terms of market, uh, school size. So, all that data is compiled. Districts that are re, pretty much compared to us would be Barnesville and Racine. Have the same number of student enrollments, same number of buildings. Uh, and in that scenario, both of the other two districts have a superintendent, a high school principal in each building, full-time. The, the other pieces that, the other two districts that I mentioned have a, either a, a dean of students or an assistant principal also. And sometimes they vary by how the role and duties are split.
And I also take into account, well, currently, the, the split in duties that Mr. Corkst has as well. Did I say the last question? Was my last question?
You never told us.
I have one more.
Okay.
This will be your last one.
This will be my last question. The, the recommendations made by the finance committee for these positions, is that correct?
Starting with the admin we're recommending to the finance committee.
Starting with administration.
Finance committee actioning out on the three and five.
And uh, I'm sorry, who's on the finance committee? Brittany and Amanda, is that on? Okay. And so, through that process, administration made the recommendation to the finance committee and all the finance committees making this recommendation to the council.
More.
All right, thanks. That's it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. We're gonna have more discussion. Hearing no additional discussion. All those in favor of approving the elementary teacher, one point oh FTE. Family consumer science fax teacher, one point oh FTE. High school principal, tech integrationist, one point oh FTE. And two high school elementary custodians, one point oh FTE for both. Hearing no more discussions. All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Positions carry. That ends the business items. We have upcoming meetings coming up. May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting, and June twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, it's a regular meeting.
Just for clarity, I wasn't trying to handpick who's on the finance committee to determine whether or not I should. I just wanted to refresh my mind in terms of, from the board, who was on that committee. That was the sole reason.
Sound good. So, and as far as meetings go, are we gonna consider or survey and look at times for the meetings this summer? So, we talked about sending out um, the evening time and the morning time, see what works best for everyone. The morning time would be seven AM, the evening time would be six PM, in the June, July, and August.
Are you still thinking Mondays or are you thinking of switching days?
Uh, for June and, for June, the Mondays, and then we, maybe the next meeting in May, we'd have a work session to discuss times and dates for next year.
So, we might all determine on baseball schedule if I have that intention.
Do we do a work session before or after regular meeting or? Yeah, I think we'd do a work session after the May sixteenth meeting to discuss uh, board meetings for the future, for next year. Because maybe we approve them in June, so. Okay. Well, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.